The allegiance and Cam, lead us in the pledge, big guy. All right, we'll make your father do it. Kyle, go ahead.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Item number three, is there any public comment? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment, we'll move on to item number four, approve minutes from the October 15 special town meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Bob, second by Stefan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-2, and note Al and Amory's abstention. Item number five, approve minutes from the October 15 regular meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Al, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes aye, motion passes 5-0-1, please note Amory's abstention. Item number six, approve minutes of the October 22 special meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? Motion by Bob, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-2, please note Cam, Marie, and Stefan's abstentions. Item number seven, approve minutes of the October 29 special town meeting. Motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-2, and please note Bob and Amory's abstention. Item number eight, approve minutes from the October 29 special meeting. Can I have a motion to do so? No, this is a special town meeting. This is a special meeting, right? All right, so motion by Stefan, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 4-0-2, please note Bob and Amory's abstention. Okay, item number nine, discussion with the executive director of the Seymour Ambulances Association in continuing our series. Appearing from the different departments and so on, just getting updates. Asked Kyle Kelly, who is the executive director of Seymour Ambulances, to come and give us a quick update of what's going on. He's brought John Lovasovo, who is the chair of the board of directors. So Kyle, if you wouldn't mind speaking into, oh, and Cam?
In the mask up.
Yes. Cam Kelly. Hi, Cam. How are you, buddy? So when you speak, just speak into the microphone.
Cam, you keeping Dad in line?
Did you review this? Is it good?
He confirmed all the numbers.
Just checking.
He confirmed them all.
So.
You're not, you're talking, not talking to my.
Good evening. What I gave you is our prepared financial statements from our auditor from this year. A little bit different than what we did last year, just to give you a quick overview. When we redid our agreement this past last year, sorry, last year. In that, we, we put in there that every other year, we can do a little bit of a scaled back audit. Still kicking the tires, looking underneath the hood, just not going as crazy. The reason we did it is, or we wanted to do it, was one, a recommendation from our auditor. And two, a cost savings. The audit that we do is typically anywhere from $12,000 to $13,000. And we've been doing that for quite a while. I'd say ten-ish, ten-plus years, we've been doing it on a regular basis, no questions asked. It was something that Kurt and I had talked about and changing around a little bit, really, honestly, truthfully, for cost savings. And having gotten that recommendation from our auditor, we did that. So because MSOC is not meeting, right, anymore. That, one of the reasons I wanted to bring that to you, to let you guys review, take a look at it. If you have any questions, please feel free. If not tonight, call me, email me, text me, whatever you want to do. So, that being said, just a little bit of a brief overview for Seymour Ambulance. Not many people are versed with, you know, some of our numbers and stuff and kind of how we operate. We're fairly unique. You guys have a unique ambulance service here in town. While we're not a town department, we are quasi department, right? We are run, that ambulance that comes out every day, if you don't know, is staffed 99% by volunteers. And that's something to be super proud of for our town. There's not many places in the area that are doing it. Outside of myself, my deputy chief, Brian Ryan, and our office manager, who does not go out on calls. That's the paid staff that we have here in town for, to run Seymour Ambulance. So three-quarters of the time, if not 99% of the time, when that ambulance goes out, it's volunteers that are coming here to support, to support the town and support the cause. Last year, we did about 2,200 calls, which is huge, again, for us to sustain like that as a volunteer service is just, it's unreal. I am super proud of it. You should be super proud of it also. Just last month, we were up about 210 calls. So probably, depending on how the next couple of months play out, will be about the same from the previous year as far as numbers are concerned. Just a little bit so you know, we do a lot, Seymour Ambulance has a lot to try and keep our volunteers in and to bring new volunteers in. We have a stipend program, a little bit of an incentive program. Again, because other places that touch us are paying an hourly wage to these guys to come out, guys and girls to come out and do these calls. We are not. So we do little things, we have a volunteer incentive program, we do stipends to try and entice, entice these folks to come out. Like John. John doesn't get paid for what he does. Not only does he do ambulance calls, but he's also our president of the board. Cam, I give a little kickback to. Something we've been talking about in a couple of different areas throughout the valley is some regionalization. VEMS is probably the biggest type of regional outfit for EMS in our area. They cover a large surface area, right? They cover from Shelton all the way into Oxford. The valley has all of our towns doing the same job. Some of us are doing training in different places. We do training at Seymour Ambulances. Oxford does training, Shelton does training. We're looking at different ways to try and bring some of that stuff together. There's more talk about maybe services down the road. But we're trying to start slow, seeing how we can work these things out and, and work together, play nice in a sandbox, and trying to cut some costs. Right? We're all doing the same job, so why can't we do some of the stuff together? Our financial state is, is not bad. We do fairly well. We don't do great, you know, we're, like I said, we're, we sustain, we bring in our revenue by going out there and doing calls. We do have our agreement here with the town, which is great, and after our last agreement has helped us tenfold. We get a stipend for fuel, we got some money towards a replacement of an ambulance after, after the first year, which is huge. Last year, we spent $230,000 to replace an ambulance. It was our oldest ambulance, and it needed to get replaced. It was remounted. The box on that truck was from, I believe, 1997, and the cabin chassis on that truck was from 2008. It needed to get done, and it's not cheap to get done, as you well know with other types of emergency services vehicles. The things that go in it, a stretcher and the stretcher lift per se for a brand-new ambulance costs about $30,000 just for the lift to put that into the ambulance. That doesn't include the stretcher. That's mandatory on newly-built ambulances now. Another state mandated, non-funded kind of a thing. So it's tough, but we do what we can. We try to increase our billing as much as we can. We do not go out there and aggressively bill. We do not take town people to collections. It's part of why we get some supplemental income from the town. There are some circumstances in which it could happen, but typically, we do not. We end up writing off close to $90,000 to $100,000 a year. We write that money off because it's just not collectible, whether it's townspeople or people that just can't pay elderly, what have you. It happens. So the money that we do get from the town, it helps to offset some of that. We do struggle. It's the name of the, it's the name of the game. It's a day and the age. It is what it is. This past year and last year or so, we've identified some things within our building that we need to do. We've had some leaks from the roof over the years. Several years back, we had some substantial flooding a number of times. So we've been working with the building department to address some of these things. Obviously, with some of those things come a cost. We're trying to figure out how we're going to do some of that stuff, and again, that's not our building, right? We, we rent that building from the town. It's a town, town's property. But we do what we can to maintain it as best we can. Some of the bigger things, we just need help with. So there's things like rugs, there's walls that need to get fixed, there's some door jams from some of these leaks from the roof. Tim from the town has been very, very helpful. He brought in a gentleman or a company a few months back over the summer to do some fixes on the roof where they identified there were some serious leaks coming in. So they addressed those, and knock on wood, they've fixed them. We've had some substantial rainstorms since then, and I haven't seen any, any water come in. So we're working on addressing the, the things that need to be fixed because of the water. Rugs being one of them, some tiles and floors. There's a big area in the office where the door jam is just, it's literally rotting out from the water. It looks like it's bleeding. It's, it's pretty crazy. We have pictures. So we're trying to work on some of that stuff to get that stuff done. Something else we've identified, as grateful as we are for having the space in the building where we are, and it's a good problem to have, but we're growing. Our membership is growing, the equipment we need is growing, the ambulances are growing. And we're running out of space, space. We don't have a lot of storage. We want to make sure, you know, we've, we've adopted some changes to try and make up for some training areas, which has kind of cut back from some of our crew areas. Our, our bays, we have, there's a trailer, I'm sure you guys have seen, parked across the street next to the highway, Seymour Ambulance Special Operations. It's been out there for probably 10 years. Because it's been out there for about 10 years, it's seen the weather. And over the past four or five years, we've had to replace upwards of $3,000 to $4,000 worth of equipment because of leaks and rodents and everything in between getting in there and damaging the equipment that's in there. That trailer is used for mass casualty incidents. It's got, it's got extra backboards and medical supplies and blood pressure cuffs and bandages and oxygen and all kinds of stuff. We actually brought it out to use it for the last mass casualty drill that we had a couple of weeks ago. While it served its purpose, it was difficult to, to use because of some of the damage that was there. So we're working on trying to replace that, replace that with something a little bit bigger, something that is a little bit more weatherproof. And something that could also serve more for communication setup also in the event that we have something large-scale like we planned for a couple of weeks ago. So that being said, we're trying to find different ways. Kurt and I have talked a few times. I've looked at different things as far as expansion and moving, and it's expensive. And to move, everything's expensive, and then it's a matter of trying to find somewhere. So, you know, there's ideas out there, but that's just a couple of things, building-wise, that we've been looking at and trying to address. This past year, I told you, we were able to replace our oldest ambulance. And just a few months ago, we, we got a grant from Matthews for $10,000 for stop-the-bleed equipment. What that did was actually gave Seymour Ambulance the ability to purchase six, what they're called, dynamic trauma bags. And those bags are going to be placed throughout all of our vehicles that we have. Easy numbers, it just added 150 tourniquets to the town of Seymour on top of chest seals and a couple other types of tourniquets and other medical supplies in the event we ever need them. Hopefully, hopefully, we never need them, but we have them. So it's a resource that we have and that other areas know that we have. So we're able to, again, we're placing those bags on each of our ambulances and our fly cars. And we were also able to get another 50 tourniquets with cases that we're going to give to our actively riding members so that they have something on their person, God forbid, they need something. It could happen. We had an incident actually a few weeks back. And the patient in the back of the ambulance was on drugs and started beating up the attendant in the back while they're driving down the highway doing 60 miles an hour at 2:00 in the morning. God forbid, it could have gotten worse and, and they could have needed, they could have gotten cut or shot. They would have had a tourniquet to hopefully help themselves. But just a little tidbit for you guys to know what we do. That was 2:00 in the morning on a Tuesday or Thursday, Sunday. You know, we're, we're out there, volunteers doing stuff like that, and I ended up running up the highway. It was, anyway. Story for another day. So as you know, we've had that last large MCI drill at Triton Plaza at the movie theater, which was a huge success. Over the summer, we had another one at Chatfield Depressy School. These drills are huge resources, not every, not only bringing all of our town services together, but the outsur, outsur, surrounding towns, the outskirts of towns. We had upwards of, I believe, eight or 10 ambulances that were there. Countless people, we had a lot of people there that came to practice. And practice helps us to make perfect and helps us to keep our skills up. And that was supported by the town as well as the rest of the services, so thank you for helping us do that. I talked to you about the trailer. Next year, we'll probably be looking at replacing another ambulance. Again, it's a 2008, that one was not a remount. That was built around 2008. It's getting up there in mileage now. It's, it's, she's getting tired. So we'll be hoping to actually remount that ambulance, and we'll take that box off, and they'll take it down to its bare skin, kind of like how you would do an old car. They'll put a new cabin chassis underneath it, put the box back on top, and make it look pretty like the other ones. Huge cost savings, so that's down the pike. Overall, Seymour Ambulance, knock on wood, we're doing a good job. We're doing a good job getting out there, doing the mission, doing the calls. We're actively recruiting people, we're actively training people. And like I said, I'm proud of the service that we have and the service we provide, especially how we do it. And you, as the board of selectmen, should also be proud of what we're doing and how we're doing it. Because the call volume that we have, it's not going down. And to have a service that is doing that with primarily volunteers that are coming in and out here to do these calls is, is, it speaks, it speaks volumes. So with that, I can take any questions if you have any?
Anybody have questions?
Still a quick one. How long have you been in your position?
In my position, I've been there a little over three years. Prior to that, I did about seven years at Socorse Aircraft, and prior to that, I was two years as a deputy chief.
Okay, and three years here. What percentage is drug-related, like that fun story you guys had on Sunday?
It depends. There's not a hard percentage because it fluctuates.
Yeah.
I'd give you maybe 15 to 25% on average are drug-related. That instance in particular was PCP. We do see a lot of opioid overdoses. You know, some are more frequent than others. But I'd give you about 15 to 25% is probably our call volume, at least maybe so far for this year.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So you mentioned your call volume. What's your call volume today? Is it growing? Are you sized to handle that call volume? Do you need more? What's the current state?
So last year, we did a little bit less than the year before, only by, I want to say, 50 or 60 calls. This year, I'm pretty confident we're probably going to match what we did last year. But that being said, we've, we've gone up substantially from what we were five years ago. And again, how we're doing it, we're doing it okay right now.
So what's that number, just out of curiosity? What's that number?
The call volume, off the top of my head, I believe that low number was probably around 1,800 from about five, four or five years ago, about 1,800 calls. So we've gone up a few hundred calls. And there's things that factor into that, right? Our demographics have changed a little bit in town. We, different things that we do in town, we do a lot of mutual aid. Just for instance, we've done a couple of calls out in Waterbury, believe it or not, in different times. So there are different things that factor into it, but over the past several years, we've probably seen a 400 or 500 call increase. Now that being said, can we sustain the way we're going with all volunteers? I would love to sit here and tell you, absolutely, sure. But this day and age, I don't believe it's possible for long-term. I really hope it is. I don't think, I don't think it is. So, you know, at some point down the road, we may have to look at alternative means, especially as a call volume grows. Especially as a call volume.
You must monitor that. I mean, that must be.
We do, we do. And like I said, I'm very proud of how we operate right now with, the way we operate with our volunteers. Extremely proud. I mean, there's, there's days, we, we have three ambulances in service, and there's days that, you know, three calls coming at once, and boom, they're gone. And I don't even, I don't even have to get up. There's days that I have to get up at 2:00 in the morning to come out and do a call. But to, to not have to get up at, on a Saturday afternoon or whatever time of day because the volunteers are coming out taking those first calls and those second calls and those third calls, speaks volumes. It speaks volumes. I, I hope it goes on for a very long time. But again, we just have to be ready for if it doesn't, right, like other places have already done so.
Thank you.
Kyle, I'm just curious, what's going to happen with that door jam? How are you going to get that repaired? And what's your timeline with that?
So I've been working with Tim to come in and repair that. He's agreed that he'll be able to come in to take care of that. We were waiting. It's been like that for a while, but they were chasing the leaks. They were chasing the leaks in the roof for a while. And it was, it was actually kind of eerie the way it happened, and when it, we'd get up, it rained, and the water would just seep through, and the rust from behind it would come through, and it literally looked like it was bleeding. So we waited for a while until we knew for sure that there weren't any more leaks. So the last couple of months, with all the rainstorms we've had, haven't seen anything. Tim's been down a couple of times to look at that, and, and he's going to have somebody come in to replace, just replace, pull the door jam out.
Put it out.
Replace the door jam. We have been doing some things ourselves. Last week and the weekend before, we had a company come in, they resurfaced, they repolished, stripped down all of our floors, rewaxed them, kind of brought them back to life. Those tile floors have been there since 2006, 2004, when the building was completed. And again, so there's, it needs some updating. There are things that we want to try and, we want to keep it going, right? Want to make sure it looks good. People are in and out of there every day.
Yeah, it's busy.
It is, it is. But so I'm not, I don't sit here and say, listen, this is your building, I need you to, you know, go do the floors and go do that. It's kind of a, you know, we're doing it together, right? So Tim's doing the doors. I'm hoping that, he could also do the carpets from when the building had flooded numerous times. We're doing some other floors. We're trying to, you know, replace some of the old stuff that was there, and we're probably going to have the painting to get, that hasn't been painted in, you know, quite some time. So we're trying to, trying to work together to get, get some things accomplished on a building.
Good. Thanks.
Anybody else?
How long do you think it'll be before you no longer fit in this, like you guys are expanding?
I could have, I could say last year, truthfully. When we, when the decision was made to combine some areas for the crews to help, it opened up some training areas, which we use. I like to be able to take all of our equipment that we have, like the trailer that we have across the street, and bring it inside. Bring one of our other fly cars that we have inside. We don't have any storage. That's a big thing, right? We have storage for our medical supplies. We don't have much storage other than that. I can sit here and tell you that literally in that entire building, there are three closets. There's one closet that serves as our IT closet slash storage for office stuff and extra uniform stuff. And there's one set of closets that serve as all of our medical supplies so that the crews have access to them. And then there's a coat closet in one of the offices. Storage is huge. We, we have right now, we rent a storage trailer from Daddio's up on Derby Avenue to be able to put some stuff up there because we just, we don't have anywhere to put it. We have, you know, the ambulances have gotten bigger. We have more and more equipment that we require to carry. And we're bursting at the seams. But listen, we're grateful for what we have, right? So we're, we're kicking through it, we're, we're pushing forward, we're moving stuff. Again, we have that trailer that we use, you know, for our overflow. But, you know, within, I'd say within the next probably two years, it's going to be tough, very, very tough to, to be able to stay there as we are now and not have any issues, so. You know, but it is, again, it is what it is, you know? I'm not sitting here telling, you know, hey, can you go build me a building down the street, please, for whatever, you know? But, I mean, you could. You totally could. Who's got the motion? No, I'm kidding. We're doing what we do, you know, we're, we're working, we're working with what we got. And if we can figure something out somewhere, somehow, it would be great. It would, it would be tremendous, so.
Who else? Any other questions?
Thanksgiving, are you ready for people to deep fry frozen turkeys?
Yes, because I love deep-fried frozen turkey.
But those, they explode with the fries.
No, absolutely not.
So he's prepared?
I, I want to make sure.
Station near Woodside, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I have some stupid friends, and there's always somebody who.
Well, listen, every ambulance has a fire extinguisher in it also, so.
Perfect.
After we put the fire out, we'll take you to the hospital. Don't tell Michael Lombardi that, though.
Yeah, I know. And Michael frowned upon that.
Right.
Yeah.
So anything else? No?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle, very much.
John, easy. You just had to smile. Thank you, Cam. Good work as always. That's right.
Thanks for keeping it in mind, Cam.
You covered it all. It was a great five minutes, Kyle. Well done. All right. All right, item number 10, financial update from the first selectman. So tonight, we passed out to you the unaudited fiscal year 2019 closing. The auditors are currently here now. As you know, we generally receive the audit at some point in December. But I wanted to at least go through the numbers to give all of you just an idea of how we finished the last fiscal year. So the first two pages are the revenue side, and then the last two pages are the expense side. So, you know, we start at the top with property taxes. You can see we collected $109,440 more in property taxes than we had budgeted. That was, the property tax itself was up 1.02%. Prior year tax was up 0.83%, and supplemental car tax was up 0.56. You know, every year, we look at increasing our collectibles. We've been doing a, a very good job in that area. Now, as you can see, by collecting more prior year tax, it's obviously going to bring down your interest and lien fees. So we had a shortfall in that line of $52,000. Skipping down to the next section, we see the intergovernmental education and then other, that is all of the state funding. We received $657,850 more in education block grant funds than we initially budgeted. We had an understanding that we would receive more, but with the uncertainty of state funding, we thought it was prudent that we stayed with the same level of funding, and then if additional money came in, that would be great. We certainly didn't want to have the same problem that we had two years ago when we had the $1.9 million shortfall and had a, had a dig out of that. So we thought it would be more prudent to do that. As you know, this board voted to purchase a fire truck in cash. That's what drove the ability to do that, once we realized that we would have this large increase of education funds coming into the town. Since we just accepted as a revenue, it has no impact on what the Board of Education ultimately gets, we were able to defer that money over to purchase a much-needed fire truck in cash. Skipping down into the other section, again, that is the rest of the state funding. So as you can see, that section, there was a $113,000 shortfall from what we had inspected, expected, excuse me, not inspected. The bottom section, permits, fees, and others, that is revenue that is collected within the town. So you can see how those lines are, you know, most of them are within, close to budget, some a little bit higher. some a little bit higher, some a little bit lower. You know, a few of the larger ones, if you skip over to page two, the building inspector with the new compliance department that, you know, this board built, you can see the very large increase in funds that we're receiving. Obviously, there's a lot more building going on than was initially budgeted. You know, less revenue in the, from the transfer station for commercial, so that's there. And again, everything else, like I said, is, you know, relatively close. And do you skip down to the bottom to some of the bigger ticket ones, sewer assessment, water assessment, water assessment interest? You know, that, again, those are fees that we're collecting from residents that have had water and sewer lines put in front of their house. You can see our interest on our general fund, we actually did a little bit better in that, about $17,000. That's a combination of having more money in the general fund than we had anticipated and then also a little increase in our investment return. Police administrative fees, those were extremely large. That was, had to do with a lot of the roadwork that was done in it. Anytime that we schedule a private duty police officer, there's a $40 fee that's charged. So, we're almost doubled the amount there. And then if you look down to the last one, other financing sources, we generally budget about $100,000 a year use of fund balance, just for contingencies, emergencies, things like that. That number had to be readjusted to $242,000. And if you recall, we got the letter saying that we, the state told us that we underfunded the Board of Education by $142,000 in the middle of the year, which is, we gave the Board of Education exactly what they asked for, but the state came back and said that wasn't enough money. So, in the middle of the year, we had to give them the $142,000. The superintendent had no idea what to do with the money, so we built the playground. But again, we had to follow the orders of the state. So, that's the accounting of that. And then the last one, the capital projects fund reimbursement, the $300,000, that's where the final closeout of Chatfield-Lopresti School. We're still in the process of closing that out with the state of Connecticut. We expect to have that done in this fiscal year. But again, we had, we expected it, we thought it would be done last fiscal year. So, we put the $300,000 in there. And again, that essentially closes out the project, the reimbursement coming back from the state, once all the final calculations are done. Because we had such a good year, we're actually able to absorb not getting that $300,000 without any problems. So, we finished the year on the revenue side, bringing in, as you can see, $141,120 more than we had anticipated. Page three is where we start with the expenses. Now, obviously, the revenue, a lot of it is, we don't necessarily have full control over. The expenses are something that we definitely have control over, how we spend our money. You know, we watch it very carefully. So, as you can see, just looking down, you can see each individual department, most of the departments were very close to what was budgeted for them. And again, you can see the original, that was the amount of the budget. The final were some changes that had to be made, whether it be for accounting purposes or what have you. And then the actual budgetary basis, that's what was actually spent. So, on the town side, our final budget was $3,052,568. We spent $2,987,887. So, we're about $64,000 ahead of budget, which is good. On the general government side, for public safety, we're about $51,000 ahead of budget that primarily was driven by the police department, which generally is the case every year. Police department came in about $33,700 ahead of budget, which was good. Public works is that next section with street lighting. You can see the sanitation. And then the next section is what's known as sundries. That's an accounting term for, and I don't necessarily know why it's called sundry, but you can see those listed out there. Again, the, if you go to near the bottom of that fourth page, capital non-reoccurring, you can see we budgeted originally, we're originally $560,000. The final number is $585,000. That's our capital non-reoccurring. You notice we only spent $325,000. That $260,000 is the mill rate stabilization account. So, we put that in to help control fluctuations in the mill rate. It's money that is budgeted, but we generally don't use that. That just continues to fall to the bottom. You can see our contingency line, our debt service, and then the Board of Education. So, when it's all said and done, our expenditures, we had anticipated spending $56,335,551. We ended up spending $55,931,687. So, we're $403,864 to the good on the expenditures. So, if you add that 403 with the 141 from the revenue side, town of Seymour is projected to have an unaudited surplus in 2000, for 2019 of $544,984. That is before paying for the fire truck. So, then now, we spent, you know, we spent $499,999 on the fire truck. So, the actual surplus, once all is said and done with the audit, we're looking at about a $45,000 surplus for fiscal year 2019. Again, these are the unaudited numbers. These numbers can absolutely change based on what the auditors come up with. I mean, they're gonna go through, they do all of their checks. You know, they may want some of the accounting reclassified, that's very common. So, you may see our expenses may go down, our revenue may go up, or vice versa, just depending on how they wanna classify things, so. But at least I wanted to give you an idea of what we are looking at for fiscal year 19. Again, we generally get the actual audit itself end of December, beginning of January. That'll be passed out to the board, so if any of you wanna read that, you're certainly welcome to do so. For fiscal year 20, we are trending very close to budget. Right now, if I had to guess, we would be running a small surplus, in the neighborhood of a few thousand dollars. But again, we're only, you know, roughly a third of the way through the year, so it's certainly very early. And that surplus is based on some encumbrances that we have in place for potential expenses. If those were not to come in, obviously, that number could change drastically. At this point, there is no need for any type of spending freeze, anything like that. The department heads are managing their budgets based on the information that they have available to them. We check each budget every two weeks, just to see where everything stands. If there are any departments that we feel are potentially heading towards a problem, Doug Thompson and myself will meet with those department heads, have a conversation, get a good understanding of what the reasons are, and then we'll make decisions based on that point. So. Any questions on this? Again, this is more informational. I wanted to give everybody an opportunity to look through it, and then certainly you can ask questions at any time.
Yeah, I got one.
Go ahead.
Just probably from my ignorance, town council, how is it that we arrive at exactly $300,000? Is that contracted or?
Uh, no, we, no, well, $300,000, it's $135,000 of what we call settlement, and then it is, the rest, $185,000 is, you know, the hourly charge. So, it's for the general town council services, it's for labor, contract negotiations, planning and zoning, inland and wetlands, so on and so forth. When that line is done at the end of the year, once we have paid all the bills, we've looked at all the settlements, what we'll do is we'll take that money and we'll sweep it generally either into the interservice fund or into our workers' compensation fund or one of our accrued benefit funds, so for sick days, vacation days.
So, it's not necessarily accurate to say that we spent $300,000 exactly on town council?
No.
That's just a budgetary?
Yes.
Yep.
Practice.
Yep.
All right, nice.
Really quick one for property taxes. Do we have a breakdown between residential and commercial?
As part of this process, no.
Okay.
They don't look at it that way. Can we get you one?
Yeah, I'd be interested to know what it is.
Brooke, can you make a note of that? Will Doug get you the breakdown of that? It's not a problem.
Super. Thank you.
I mean, just gorilla math, it's about 70/30? But we can get you actual numbers. Yeah, that's not a problem. Anything else? Anybody? No? All right, as you go through this, do you have any other questions? I mean, please don't hesitate to let me know. All right, item number 11, appointments. We have one appointment before us. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment dated October, that should be November 1st. November 1st, 2019, as presented. Motion by Stephon, second by Emery. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much, everyone. Item number 13, tax refunds and abatements. We do not have any. They will present both sets at our next meeting.
Item 12.
Item 12. Thank you, Mr. Lee Clair. Uh, huh?
Yeah. Tax refunds and abatements, right here.
Where? That was not in my packet.
Where are you firing?
Oh, all right then. Okay, so let's go back to item number 12, tax refunds and abatements. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated October 31st, 2019, as presented by Susan Bowlen in our tax office. Posted by Stephon, second by Emery. Under discussion. Everybody take a look, make sure there's no issues. Oh, I'm in my packet, I have it. I'm good. I already looked at it. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0. Item number 13, transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number 14, correspondence. The only correspondence we have for this meeting are the check registers, which were sent separately. We'll have some letters and things that kinda came in after the fact, which we'll include in our next packet. So, we'll go to item number 15, public comment. Is there any public comments? Is there any public comments? Hearing no public comment. We'll move on to item number 16, selectmen's public comments. Mr. Boniak.
Yeah, just quickly, I wanna say thank you to the residents of Seymour for coming out to vote yesterday and particularly for approving the bonding for the roads. It's good to see the townspeople making, spending for roads a priority. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Stephon. Rob?
I wanted to say thank you to Stephon for his service here. I am excited to see.
I don't know how many times I have to tell you, this is not my last meeting.
He's got one more.
I know, it's not.
He's got one more.
I know. Just saying, thanks, 'cause next time, I'm gonna tell you, good, get the heck out.
It's a tough crowd.
Then I get, then I will wait till next meeting to say I'm excited for working with you guys for another two years.
Thank you, Rob. Al. I know, exactly. What are you doing?
Don't say goodbye to Stephon.
That's right.
I'm gonna get hit. All right. Just wanna congratulate the Seymour High girls soccer team. They've had the best record in a long time. And congratulate Tom Cunningham on getting NBL Coach of the Year, his first year with us. He came from Fairfield Ward, we're very lucky to have him. Girls have made great progress, a lot of fun to watch. They have their first state playoff game this, next week, I think Tuesday night. And also wanna congratulate the girls volleyball team at Seymour High, number one seed. They're doing great. I think they have a match tonight or tomorrow night.
Championship.
Right, championship tonight?
Yes.
Against Naugatuck tomorrow night?
Against Naugatuck, I don't know if it's there tomorrow.
Yeah, NBL, yeah.
Yeah. So, they're doing great, too. Just wanna congratulate those two teams and go Cats. Thanks.
Thank you, Al. Emery?
Not much, just a reminder that Monday.
Monday.
Monday is Veterans Day.
Monday's Veterans, oh, you stole my thunder. Keep rolling. Okay, Monday is Veterans Day, building off what Emery said, 10 o'clock, the Navy wreath is dropped off of the Bank Street Bridge, if anybody's interested, you're certainly welcome to come down. And then at 11 o'clock, well, actually, 11:11, the ceremony is at French Memorial Park. So, if any of you would like to come and watch that, that is certainly a nice tribute. They pay tribute to all of the veterans who have passed away since Memorial Day, which is certainly a nice ceremony that they do. So, if you're around and available, maybe half hour, it's a nice, nice little service.
Chairman, could you ask by standing this at the one?
Yeah, can I have a motion to? Okay, can you all stand at recess? Never, never done.
Well, 'cause Leclair knows Robert's rules like the back of hand.
I've never done that in eight years. Do we need to walk someplace?
I have one.
Oh, okay. Wow, after eight years, I've never stood at recess before.
Give you a little of this.
You never had a student in the corner at recess, huh? All right, I'm tired.
Yeah, we always have a quick, nice, long, beautiful, whatever.
All right, well, we can unstand at recess. Recession was good for everyone, I hope. All right. Hopefully, you all didn't get too sweaty. Rory's gonna pass out some milk, a little bit. Maybe we'll do a little snack time and then we'll move forward. Okay. So, Emery, you're good?
Mm.
Yeah, okay, welcome back. All right.
No, we missed, um.
You missed them?
We missed correspondences.
Somebody did. We said there was no correspondence, just check registers.
We had a couple of letters.
Right there, Palmer Simpson.
I swear to God, none of this stuff is in my packet.
Oh, boy.
I'll take this up with Mr. Burke.
Hang on, Rory.
Tomorrow. Well, listen, I would not wanna be a political appointee at this point. That's all I'm gonna say.
You're not here last year, it might be.
That's right. Stephon, would you like to work the camera? Then you're still here.
Sure.
Okay, well, let's slip back to correspondence.
Sorry.
So, we have two pieces of correspondence. We have a letter from, I'm just gonna look at the letter. Oh, it's a letter from Chris Bowen, who will be a new member of the Board of Selectmen, replacing Stephon, but not the next meeting, the meeting after that, Rob, in case there was a little uncertainty.
Yeah.
And he is just, that's right. He is stepping down effective immediately from his appointed position as an alternate to planning and zoning. So, we'd like to thank the selectmen and selectwomen for the appointment. And then also, we have Ed Hendricks, who will be stepping down from the Board of Education. And you can see Ed is attached letter here. He has some family medical issues that he needs to address. His replacement has actually probably already been replaced at the Board of Education. They had their meeting tonight as well. Okay, so is there anything else that I've missed?
I don't think so.
No? Rory, you're losing your giant bag of popcorn in your office. All right, so we're gonna go back to, if this is okay, with you, Mr. Leclair. We will, we will never miss you, Bob.
I wanted to thank Steve because this is his last call.
That's Stephon.
Doesn't matter anymore.
That's right.
I think I said that a million times.
Well, I called him Stefan for like the first year and a half.
Go Cats, good for the girls, so I'm excited to hear him.
All right. And then just to add up kind of a few comments that were made, obviously, it was excellent that the communications package passed as well as the road package. That's certainly a great thing. So, I'll be sitting down next week with financial advisors. We're gonna start the process of putting the bond packages actually together. We're gonna have to go out for another bond rating, and then we'll work through that process. The roads obviously won't start till the spring, so we'll be looking to bring the money in at some point, probably in February or March. At the same time, we will do the communications equipment with regards to the community center. We, I got out of it exactly what I'd hoped to get out of it, which was stimulating conversation. I know that we did things very differently than normal. I think we would all agree that we have a very challenging time engaging the residents in conversation on some of these big issues, we can get barely, barely get people to come out to vote. Probably over the last week was the most conversation I've ever seen on one topic, which was a great thing. So at our meeting in December, we will be putting names forward for the building committee for the community center. So we will start the process, we'll put together a series of informational meetings, public hearings, we'll be doing Survey Monkeys, things like that, try to get as much input from the residents as we possibly can. Hopefully, we will have information back to this board in the March timeframe, so that way we can make a determination as to the direction we may wanna go down the road, is it a public-private partnership like we've talked about? Do we actually wanna go back out, or to bond it? If that's the case, then we'll need to put it back in front of the residents. But at that point, we'll have substantially more information, when obviously, one of the biggest concerns people had was the lack of information, so we'll be able to take care of that for them. But I think the residents are definitely going to be more engaged in this process than had we done it the other way. So, just wanna give everybody a little bit of an update on that. So obviously, we'll all get an opportunity to provide our feedback. It will ultimately come to us, to the Board of Finance, and then to a town meeting. I would expect that that town meeting will get the required 50 people, but just in case, obviously, it'll be a final decision that'll be made by this board, so, okay? All right, so with that, Mr. Leclerc, I've missed many things tonight, obviously, is there anything else? Thank you. Mr. Burke, is there anything you would like to add? Would you like to say goodbye to everybody, maybe? It's been a pleasure working with them, or however you wanna do that. Yeah, we'll be sure, that's the famous last words, Rory, can you print me a packet? So Monica, anything you'd like to add, now that you got two shoes? No? Veronica, anything you want to add? All right, with that, I'll...
I think I'll shoot her.
Motion by Anne Marie, second by Al, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstained. Chair votes aye, motion passes 6-0, mark the meeting closed at 7:54, and the Bohuniac and I have...